I'll call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. And welcome to the RBB Community School Corporation's regular monthly meeting for August of 2024. Please let the record show that all board members are present. Oh, there he is. Yep, all present. Are there any visitors' comments?
There was no sign of the visitor comments.
Okay, so we'll move straight to the consent agenda. We have the minutes for July 15th, regular board meeting. We have the Treasury's report for July of 2024. And Mr. Turner, the claims, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. For gross wages on July the 5th, 2024, $612,383.69. For gross wages on July the 19th, 2024, $590,837.08. For gross wages, mini payroll on July 20th, 2024, for $3,720. And then for total in that area, for $1,205,940.77. For claims and prepays on 7-1 through 7-31, 2024, $3,214,117.51. For claims and vouchers for August 18th, 2024, $531,958.35. For a total in that area of $3,746,076.36. For a grand total of $4,953,017.13. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. For personnel, we have resignation, retirements, non-renewals, leaves and terminations, C-1 through 19, and appointments and transfers, D-1 through 66. We will come back to a few of these after the vote. Donation, there was some stained glass that was donated to the Edgewood Junior High School art class from Brian and Brenda Lewis, so really appreciate that. And for out-of-state and overnight field trips, the Music Warehouse and Sophisticated Ladies at, I believe, two different dates are going to Trafalgar. Do you want to mention that, Dr. Sanders?
Yes, I was just going to make note that, like, different extracurricular activities, sports, performing arts, so our football, baseball teams go to retreats, the band goes to retreat, and so the show choirs are going to do this September 7th and 8th. And it's just a way to get everybody together, start growing as a team, and just grow before the season even gets started.
And I know I've mentioned this before, but I'm really thinking that the board ought to consider, because, like, if somebody makes it to state or makes it to regionals or something, there's all these things that come up where board meetings aren't practical, to look at that policy and have those made at the superintendent level, and then they could just be an informational item at the board meetings.
Sure.
We know what's going on and everything, but there's no, that we wouldn't need to worry about them getting approved and...
Well, that's a good point, because by practice, the director, the coach creates information about the trip or the retreat, and it goes to Mr. Ackerman, he reviews that, and then it goes to me, and then I review it. So there's a multi-step practice to getting these approved.
Yeah, you know, the big trips and stuff.
Right, right.
But those that are, need to be turned around fast over our annual kind of things.
We can do that.
So we'll look into that. Okay, is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I'm in.
I'll second.
Move and seconding, any discussions?
I just think in about a year, we probably need to be planning on getting some mental health for Mr. Scholl, because he's losing Roxanne Finch and Linda Stevens at the end of the year. I saw that, those retirements, and that's going to be a, that is going to be a change.
Yes, we'll need to get a counselor set up for that. Okay, anything further?
One more question. The summer school hiring...
So those just weren't ready for the July board meeting, then? We're just hiring them after the fact?
Right.
Okay.
Junior high summer school happening.
Junior high.
Summer school happening.
But we didn't know who the teachers were prior to that?
Some of them, they were waiting.
Okay, all right.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, as Mr. Demoss already mentioned, I told these wonderful ladies that I, of course, I've told other people this, and it never works, that I was not going to sign their appointment sheet for their retirement. But these two ladies, Roxanne, 29 years as secretary, and Linda Stevens, 23 years as the attendance clerk, and being a principal myself, I know that, I know the principal is technically the head of the school, but I know who runs the school, and Andy's back there shaking his head yes. So they're just, they just deserve a great retirement because of their dedication to Edgewood Schools. And then I'd like to be able to introduce a couple of teachers, brand-new teachers. Brittany Petroni, and she will be teaching art. And Brittany has two children already attending EPS, and one that will be once she gets, is it boy or girl?
A boy.
A boy, once he gets school age. He's just two now, but Brittany brings a lot of spirit, and she just loves kids, and we're glad to have her. And then Amanda Rensler, who, I introduced her to the principal at the junior high tonight. But Amanda did a really great job last year working for us as an instructional assistant, and so, you know, when you spot talent, you have to find a place for them, so we're glad to have Amanda teaching first grade.
She had such a great secondary education.
Yes, that's true.
Welcome to the group of your...
Our family now, so. There is a supplemental personnel report. Mr. Irwin?
Do you have a bill on this agenda?
Yes.
Okay, cool, all right. So the supplemental personnel report, this is in accordance with the Indiana Code that was new dating back to the July of 2023, so it's Indiana Code 2026-511.2. I sent you guys an email with the information that you guys needed to vote on this one. It just has to be pulled out separate from the regular consent agenda, and so that's why you see that separate agenda item for you guys to vote on. Ms. Fish would be an instructional assistant there at EIS, asking for your approval on that.
All right, I'll second.
Move and seconding, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Now the assistant superintendent report, Mr. Irwin.
Yeah, so you guys should have the cash flows there. Things have continued on, right on as scheduled here. Our interest on investments has remained really high. I think we had our best month to date. A lot of credit goes to Debbie. She spends time making sure, passing the funds back and forth between Trust Indiana and People State Bank. We get really good rates with our, with our accounts there at Trust Indiana, and then keep those over there as long as possible, and then transfer them back so that we can make our expenses and stuff like that, making payroll and all of those things. So that continues to beat projections, which is a good thing. I always keep those rather conservative, and I just kind of up them as time goes on. I know that we continue to hear that rates are going to change, but right now, we've stayed at a really, really high mark. This has been updated with the latest Form 54. I know we're all anxious for ADM as we get closer to next, you know, we get to next month, we'll be a lot more dialed in on that. I know that Dr. Sanders and I are getting weekly reports on where we're at with ADM and by grade level, by school, all of those things. And so that'll, that'll dial in a lot of end-of-year things. There's a lot of decisions here at the end, a lot of changes that happen, whether it's with our per pupil funding, or as we get to contract settlement, looking at people's pay and benefits, all of those things, staffing changes. Staffing changes as far as whether that costs us more or less, depending on the things that, the people that we brought in and the positions that we have. So we just continue to update those things, and those will continue to key in here as we get toward the end of the year. But there's a lot that shakes out there. We're obviously in great position there, so excited to see what the end of the year brings and the end of, end of coming close to ADM numbers, anyway. Debt service fund, made our scheduled debt payments in July, and we still have a few of those debts that are payable in July. No surprises there, we're exactly where we expected to be, and so there's not much else to report there at the debt service fund. And then the operations fund, again, projections staying really close. That long-awaited bus we've been talking about for about three months is set to show up this week, so we are set to pay for that. We pay on arrival. Still trying to figure out when the second bus comes. That target date continues to move around as we talk with Kurland, who is the provider of that, that minibus. There's a possibility that it doesn't come in in 2024, and so we would have to pull appropriation forward. So we're just kind of seeing what happens there. I've kind of placed markers in the claims about when it might come in, and then I just have to continue to make adjustments as things happen throughout the year. So year-end balances are in really good shape, and again, overall, we're in a, we're in a great place, so. That'll take any questions?
On ADM, I think on Friday... We'll share the, the numbers that we have. Just, you know, I've learned over the years, sometimes, I didn't want to learn this lesson, but the numbers continue to change. After the school year starts, we still have enrollments, we still have withdrawals, and so to give you numbers before that, it just changes, so it really wouldn't mean a lot. So I think by Friday, they, they should be stabilized enough to be able to share that.
They've definitely slowed down at this point, as far as the number of withdrawals, enrollments, things getting cleaned up, especially at this point in the year, a lot of schools, if they've moved out of state, a lot of those out-of-state schools are starting at this point. I've got a nephew that, North Carolina, and they still haven't started school. So sometimes you're still waiting on some of those to trickle in, if we get a request for records or something like that, but it is stabilizing out, so.
All right. So the next item on our agenda is the public hearing on the second preliminary determination, and so we will open the second preliminary determination public hearing at this time. And the first item on the agenda is for the board to hold this, to hold a preliminary meeting on the proposed 2024 geo-bonds project. If you are interested in speaking at the hearing, please make sure you have signed the sign-in sheet at the front of the room, which should indicate your name and address. After a presentation by the administration and its advisors, there will be an opportunity for the public to make comments about the project. At the hearing, we will ask that each person limit their comments to five minutes, and that the topic be limited to the proposed project under consideration. I will note that notice of this preliminary, the secondary, second preliminary determination hearing was published as legally required, and at this time, I will ask that Jacob McClellan with Bose McKinney &amp; Evans to explain the purpose for the hearing.
Good evening. Is the microphone, you guys can hear me okay? I'll be loud anyways, if not. So just as a refresher, I know you guys have been through this process before. Statutorily, because of the size of projects, they can be considered controlled projects, which require a couple of additional public hearings and some additional analysis on the part of the board. A couple of years ago, the statute was changed so that if your debt service rate is 40 cents up to 80 cents, you're automatically considered a controlled project. If it's over 80 cents, you're automatically considered a controlled project that has to go to referendum. You guys fall in the category of the 40 to 80 cents, so even though this project and this potential bond is of a size that it wouldn't otherwise be a controlled project, we have to have these two additional public hearings. So this is the, the second public hearing for this. I know that you guys had one at your last board meeting. And then as far as the authorizations for your geo-bonds, just high-level, just so you guys know where we're going, there'll be another public hearing which kind of overlaps with this, that you would have to do anyways, but has the same sort of analysis. And then we've combined the resolutions together, so it's preliminary determination, bond resolution, which includes all the authorizations necessary for the issuance of the bonds, and that 1028 approval. And then later in the agenda, you'll have your appropriation hearing, like you've had in the past, and an appropriation resolution. But just to touch on everything we need for the preliminary determination hearing, I know that we have the statutorily required information out by the agendas, and this is for a bond not to exceed $3,500,000. And the resolution, again, includes not to exceed parameters provided by Stiefel. As far as timing, assuming everything passes tonight, the process is that we send out a notice. There's a 30-day period when folks could remonstrate and have the petition remonstrance process apply. That's kind of a clipboard race, and that would add, you know, 90 to 120 days to the process if that happened. Once we're through that 30 days, I think Stiefel will work with Dr. Sanders and Matt to sell the bonds, and we'd be looking at potentially a closing toward the end of October. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, I'll turn it back over to you, Dana.
We will now hear from Dr. Sanders about the process of determining the scope for the 2024 geo-bond project and the need for the project.
Yes, Dana, the, the main scope of using these funds would be going towards technology improvements, replacements and upgrades. RBB provides our students with Chromebooks, grades six through 12, take those Chromebooks home, and so a good portion of these funds will go towards replacing student Chromebooks. Also laptops, we provide laptops to our teachers, and as you know, technology is ever-changing, and so we have to constantly be making sure that our equipment, our Chromebooks, our laptops and our servers, that they are still in line with the changing in technology, the changes with the different software programs. And so that would be the majority of the geo-bonds. We would still have budgeted for just general improvements and renovations in all of our school facilities.
Now we will hear from Stiefel, financial advisors, and we have Matt Shoemaker here, who will discuss how the project will be financed, as well as give the effect on the typical property taxpayer. Mr. Shoemaker?
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Great to see you again. So as we spoke last month, we spoke in hypotheticals, because we did not have your assessed value, but we did receive that information last week. So I've updated my presentation with real numbers, and we can walk through that. If we go to the first page, this is where you guys currently stand as of today. Again, as a reminder, there's two different funds that go into your total tax rate. You have the debt service fund and the operations fund. The existing debt service, all of your bonds outstanding as of today, illustrated in the navy portion of this bar graph. The operations fund tax rate is illustrated by the lighter blue portion of this bar graph. As a reminder, current budget year, you guys are at $1.05 for your tax rate, which has gone down the last couple of years. Moving forward, you can see you're set up to have a drop moving forward. It sets up the position that you're in today, that you can do additional projects, you can do it in a way to meet your tax rate goals. As we look at the next page, you have stated that you would like to drop the tax rate another penny in 2025. So this page looks at repayment schedule for the 2024 bonds, the proposed bonds, at $3.5 million. The orange portion in 2025 would take that tax rate to $1.04, so dropping from $1.05 to $1.04 in 2025. This will be a two-year repayment. You can see there's a little bit out there in 2026, but in 26, as we talked about last time, you retain the flexibility to be able to do additional projects as early as next year if you have some, and hopefully do so continuing your, your tax rate goal. As we look at the last page, I know Jacob mentioned this a little bit, but the parameters as part of your resolution, paramount, $3.5 million, that's a not-to-exceed number. You can borrow any number up to $3.5 million, you cannot borrow any number over $3.5 million. Estimated cost of issuance, these are upfront professional fees. We would expect this to be a conservative number, but we've listed $150,000. That would leave $3,350,000 available for the hard and soft project costs, the money actually going into these projects. Estimated interest rate, 6%. Again, this is a conservative number as well. If you were selling these today, you'd be somewhere probably just under 4%. As Jacob talked about, we're not selling them today, things can change, so we want to make sure that we're putting in a conservative interest rate there. $3.5 million at 6% gives you an estimated interest expense of $243,111. Again, if and when we sell these bonds at a lower interest rate, that estimated interest expense will be reflected lower as well. Estimated maximum tax rate impact, as we talked about last month, this is just formulaic. This takes the largest payment you're going to have in any one year, divides it by your current assessed value, doesn't take into account the first page I showed, where you have some debt dropping off, where you're replacing debt. So in your resolution, you will see an estimated maximum tax rate impact of just over 20 cents. However, the net impact on the rate, as we mentioned, is zero, it's actually going down a penny, so I did want to make that distinction of what you see in your resolution and what is actually going to be seen by the taxpayers. That's it. I'm happy to answer questions that anyone has. Sure.
So where's the charge?
Yes.
Is that sure where our assessed?
Yeah, so your assessed value went up 12% for pay 2025.
But people are still appealing until too, right? There's people who still...
When the county sent out that information, the 12% is based on them withholding 2% of the AV. There was 2% of AV that was in appeals, and so they held the 2%. 12% is reflective even with the 2% held.
So this, the 12% is, is your number. They withhold some in case there are some appeals, because that can take time, so your 12%, regardless of appeals, is set for pay 2025.
Okay, so is this, are these projections based on the assessed value of 12% increase?
Correct. This has the correct number.
Do you dial it back a little bit more than that even?
Um...
Like 6% or 7%?
Talking about in future years, or are you talking about...
For this, for this year. I mean, we, we know for a fact it's 12% then, is what you're saying.
Yes, huh, yes, yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. That's what, that is what has been certified for 2025.
So everything moving forward, assuming that's...
So moving forward, we've assumed a 2% growth for the next four years, and then the 0% thereafter.
Okay.
But because of that flexibility, if your assessed value does something besides that 2%, you'll have time to react to that, just like you have really the last three, four, or five years, to make sure we're continuing to hit your tax rate goal on a year-to-year basis.
Okay. Yeah.
Any further questions? Is there anyone present who wanted to speak at the public hearing? Okay, well, then I won't go through all the parameters of that. There's no one who would like to speak, so at this time, then we will close the public hearing on the second prelimination or preliminarily determination. Get my stuff over here. Okay, so now it is the, we'll have to open the public hearing on the 1028 hearing, and so let me just get that in front of me. Okay, again, this is the 1028 hearing on the proposed 2024 geo-bonds project. If you are interested in speaking at this hearing, we'll go through that if there is anybody that shows up, so, and wants to speak. So we'll just go straight to Jacob McClellan, our bond counselor.
Yeah, so, so just as I mentioned before, so this is required if you're going to undertake a project that's going to be funded with bonds, which are payable from property tax, and that project costs over $1 million. This was included in the notice for the public hearings for the preliminary determination, so it's been noticed, and I, you typically would reference the need for the project and the tax impact, but I'll just note for, for the minutes, for the meeting, that we've already discussed in more detail than we would in a normal 1028 hearing, in the preliminary determination hearing, everything that we're required to discuss. So just reference that within the minutes, but with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I know you guys have been through this before, so.
Okay, since we've incorporated that, we will now open the hearing to public comment, if there is any. And not seeing any, then we will close the public hearing on the 1028. All right, and now the next item is consideration of the preliminary determination, 1028 bond resolution. And this, you, Matt?
Yeah, I'm actually considering that back after Jacob. I don't want to explain the resolution.
For the preliminary determination, 1028 and bond resolution.
Yeah, so in prior years, we kind of separated these resolutions, but I combined them to, to kind of streamline them. The one just makes the findings required under that 1028 statute related to the project. A portion of the resolution makes all the findings required for preliminary determination purposes, because this is a controlled project. And then the balance of the resolution is your geo-bond resolution, and it includes all the authorizations necessary for the issuance of the bonds for the project. As in prior years, you know, once we get through the 30 days, Matt, we'll work with Matt and Dr. Sanders on the pricing of the bonds, assuming the bonds are sold, we'll get together a closing package tabbed up for signatures, and we would anticipate that, that 30 days, I'll send a notice tomorrow, probably to the newspaper, that'll probably run toward the end of September, so you guys would be in a position to market the bonds early October. I would think we'll be closed probably late October, unless you guys determine that there's a reason to close at a later date. I know, as of right now, I think you guys are looking at proceeding October, but with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but it'll be very similar to your prior process with geo-bonds, so.
Any questions? So do we have a motion on the preliminary determination, 1028 bond resolution?
The move that we adopt the preliminary determination, 1028 bond resolution is presented.
Move and seconding, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we have a public hearing on the additional appropriation for the geo-bond. Again, if there's anybody interested in speaking, we'll cover that part here in a few minutes, and so we'll turn it back to Jacob McClellan again.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I know you guys have been through this before too, but just for the public, whenever you're going to issue bonds, you have to appropriate the proceeds into your budget, so this is the process by which you appropriate those proceeds so that the school corporation can spend them. So in that same notice that we put out related to the hearings for the preliminary determination, we also included notice for the additional appropriation, and so now would be the time to take comment on the appropriateness of that appropriation, so.
One who would like to speak on this appropriation? Then I will officially close the public hearing on the additional appropriation, and then so there will be a resolution for the additional appropriation.
So this makes the bond... Is appropriating the proceeds of the bonds. Again, it's a not-to-exceed, but this is the evidence that you've appropriated those into the budget and can spend those funds. Whenever you guys close on the bonds, we'll have this as a record. Whenever you guys close on the bonds, we'll have this as a record and can file that with the LGF should they need it, but that's the purpose of that resolution, so.
Additional appropriation resolution.
I'll move approval.
Move and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Is, you satisfied? We're good? Okay, all right. Thank you, and you gentlemen are welcome to hang around if you want, but if I were you, I would take my time to exit stage left. Okay, so now we are moving on to granting permission to advertise for the 2025 budget. Mr. Irwin.
Yeah, so in the board packet, I put numerous different documents. I put about three pages worth of notes in there about the 2025 budget, put in there a copy of the Form 3. I actually put an updated copy of the Form 3 in front of you. I did make a slight adjustment to one of the numbers this morning. I sat down with Chad Blacklock and did another review of the budget before tonight, and kind of were talking through some numbers and decided to tweak how much TAW interest we had. So because of the way that our bond payments fall, we have a big shortfall be, once bond payments are made in January before the first dispersment of property tax dollars comes in, so it requires us to do that TAW that we do every year, and so it's going to be a bigger size than what it was, and so I just wanted to make sure I didn't go too low on that number, right? So again, when we, when we advertise, we are advertising, advertising a high point, we can always work down from there, and so that's what I wanted to make sure that I had put an appropriate high point on there. When you look at the, the numbers and some of the things that are in there, I have incorporated what we were just talking about. I put those parameters within the budget when it comes to our debt service rate and all of those things, and one of the, the big reminders that I always try to put on there is that this form, the numbers that you see are based on what I've inputted into the system, and so one of those big drivers is AV. So we've heard what the update of the AV is, but when we do the budgeting process, I put in 85% of the previous year AV, which just protects us against anything with that far as changes and that sort of thing goes. When they actually work the budget, the DLGF will input those actual numbers, and then they calculate it out, and we'll follow the same process that we have every year for the last, you know, five, six years. So you guys are very familiar with that. One of the things that I put into the board packet for you was a comparison of last year's budget to this year's budget numbers, and one of the things that I added to it was what our actual appropriation is at this time, so that you could look at that comparison based on what it is that I'm putting in for the 2025 budget, and then I put in some of those drivers about what accounts for most of that change. A lot of it typically is salary and benefits, that's our biggest expense, and so I always try to continue to put a buffer in there for changes in pay to make sure that we have the appropriate appropriation for that. But one of the big changes in the education fund this year is that the state is doing away with the textbook curriculum material rental fund, which is the O900 fund that you see in your fund report, and all of that is now going to be pushed into the education fund. So by, by January 1 of this year, we'll have to take whatever's left in the 900 fund, transfer it to the education fund, and now all of those expenses moving forward in 2025 will now have to come from the education fund. So again, that, you've got to track that, and then you have to have the appropriation in order to spend it. You'll see some of the numbers are a little bit closer and what our current appropriation is after we did encumbrances at the beginning of the year and what the budget is now. I've got plenty of flexibility of what I'm projecting as a remaining appropriation at the end of the year, that once we've kind of dialed in where we're at with staff pay and our ADM and all these other things, I'll have enough appropriation that I can pull forward if I need to add on top of what's in here in the operations fund and the education fund to account for that, and so that's something that we can always do. The debt service fund, you can't do that, you can't encumber that appropriation forward, but that's not necessarily a concern, and again, kind of goes back to the reason why I upped that numbered a little bit for that TAW interest to make sure that I had that high watermark high enough. So in that, my plan would be to advertise this on Friday of this week. Again, I would push, push this out on Gateway, that's where we advertise the budget to. I would then upload a copy of the bus replacement plan, the capital projects plan, and then I would also put that, the, those two plans on the school website, which is part of the process that we follow every year. Again, most of that is very routine, staying with the bus replacement plan, replacing about two buses every year. The capital project plans is essentially a list of what ifs, of things that we know could possibly be coming in, in the near future and could possibly be spent from the operations fund. It's not a, we have to do this, or this is going to definitely come from the operations fund. It's just a, hey, what are some things of over 10,000 that we think could possibly come in our way that we're continuing to plan for? And so that's essentially what that document serves as. They have the, the resolutions that you'll see as we get closer to adoption, and then you will notice in the updated form that I gave you, I have the updated date for our September board meeting with the time on there, so that's, that's a deviation from the previous board calendar, the budget calendar that you saw, and then I updated that budget calendar that you saw in the board packet to reflect that as well. So with that, I'll take any questions that you have specific to it, but again, I put a lot of different information in there to remind you of the process, why we do certain things, where those numbers come from, but again, this is asking for appropriation, and appropriation is simply authority to spend. We track cash on a monthly basis, which is why you continue to see those cash flows, and so that's the most important thing. The DLGF is simply, they're telling us whether or not that's a fundable budget with obvious debt service and operations being the most crucial because we're actually levying taxes off of that, so we pay a little closer attention to that to make sure that it is very much in line with what we want with our tax rate goals.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Move and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. You may advertise the budget. Now consideration to approve an adjunct teacher permit, Mr. Irwin.
Yeah, so you guys are probably pretty familiar with this by now, but this is a continuation of the same employee that we had, Mr. Ken Grile, who's our media productions teacher there at the junior high. So I didn't repost the position, but again, redid all the paperwork that's required, and then this permit is here, you have to approve the permit each year, and then assuming that I would get your approvals for this, then I will submit the JOT form to the state that they track that our use of, of this and how it's serving the school corporation. I don't know how much longer we'll need to do this for him because hopefully he plans to, to pursue a teaching degree as he loves what he's doing and he's, and he's doing good work with our kids. So this is that permit. In the consent agenda, you guys saw the appointment sheet and, and the contract, which has been reviewed by Christine from Ferguson Law.
I'll move approval of the adjunct teacher permit.
Move and seconded. Any discussion?
Is this the same?
After the second year, does he have to get an emergency teaching license because this is bypassing it?
No. So as long as we're doing the adjunct, we can do this. Right now, there's no...
He doesn't have to show he's taking classes or anything.
And again, Christine, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but there's no statutory limit of how many times we could do this. We just have to, we just have to go back through the process again each year and make sure that the state knows that we've done that. That's different if he were to apply for an emergency license for, to be certified and be a certified teacher, and so that would be a little bit different as far as certain requirements to go and get licensure and the required classes to get that.
So once you start the emergency permit process, then that starts the clock ticking.
Have to take classes.
Right.
But this by, so are we paying this young man as a certified teacher then?
It's very much in line with what we pay in that. Yes, there's a little bit of some deviation with the way that the benefits work because it is a classified employee agreement, and those benefits look different than that of a certificated employee, and that's very, that's lined out in the agreement, so that's one of the things that the ISBA had recommended and that we continue to do in the contract is it specifically lines out what the benefits are and how, and how that relates to the employee, and that is in the classified employee agreement that you saw in the board packet.
And he's very close to starting his program. We recently had conversations with Matt, Jennifer Barrett, myself, and also the Indiana Department of Education, and talking about what would be the most appropriate path, talking about the best transition to teaching programs, and so he's exploring all that now. He should be ready to go pretty soon. I imagine next year we'll be asking for an emergency permit for him.
Move and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Now we're going to look at the ROI grant agreement for our career coach, Dr. Sanders.
Yeah, so you've heard us talk many, many times about...
Our partnership with ROI, Regional Opportunity Initiatives. We're one of several counties that partners with ROI, and the whole basis of the program is to connect education with the business world, to be able to, with that partnership, add to the, the community, the economy in, in that community, and so this is just another extension of that, which also aligns with the new diploma plan that DOE is presenting. This will actually put us out in front, will, will have opportunities to work with the, through this process, be able to work with the, the transition to this new diploma and the emphasis on careers. I like what it says. The initiative is going to be focusing on the model of learners to earners, learners to earners, I think that's an awesome phrase, that will be able to work, participate in events that will help us to prepare for our eighth graders who will be transitioning to the new diploma, and, and also the, the career coach. Coach will, will work with our counselors as we make that transition, will work with local employers, and just help the whole process get off to a successful start. This grant ends or expires December 2025, so it, the position is one that we hope ROI will continue to get additional funding from the Indiana Commission for Higher Education that'll fund this position past December of 2025, but the, the bottom line is, this position, the career coach, will help us get off to a great start, an informed start to the new diploma plan. So I recommend approval of this agreement. This agreement, by the way, was not in your board packet. It was emailed to you today, and you have a copy of it in front of you. It has been reviewed by Ferguson Law.
ROI grant agreement, career coach?
And I will state that the grant amount is 109,620, correct?
Yes, thank you very much for saying that.
Okay, is there a second? Move and seconded. Any discussion?
Dr. Sanders, is this going to be...
That's a nice, that's a really nice grant that we're receiving again for this. Is it going to fund more than one position?
No, it funds a position salary benefits for year...
For a year and a half. Oh, for a year and a half, okay. Okay, so my, here's my concern. I don't know if it, we haven't sent out for applicants yet, right? But if we hire somebody that's in-house already and the grant runs out in a year and a half, is, is there going to be a segue back for that person? I just want us to make sure we're thinking that through.
Say that again, I didn't...
So we've got some great grants from our, I mean, we, the people have done a lot, great job of writing grants, but when they run out, if there's not a replacement grant, do, are we, are we thinking ahead, like how we're going to keep it going?
We do that with every position we hire through a grant. I think this one is a little bit different. Of course, we would love to be able to have this position longer than a year and a half, but the key here is getting us off, on a good start with, with this new diploma plan and working with our local communities, our employers in our community to be able to build those relationships, so a lot of work's going to be done in a year and a half that will provide benefits whether it continues or not.
Okay, okay.
Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now consideration to approve the one-year curriculum adoptions and...
Jennifer Barrett, I'm on for that.
Good evening. So over the course of the past couple of months, Matt and Debbie, Rick and I have been working on a full curriculum audit. As you'll notice on here, I just did a, a quick review of where we are, just basically in the four content areas, the four main content areas. As you know, with math, we adopted REVEAL last year, so we're heading into our second full year with that. Starting to get comfortable, second year always goes better than that first year does. With ELA, we adopted CKLA at the end of last year for kindergarten through fifth grade, so we're really getting into implementation a year, sorry, a week and a half into it, so we're definitely in the bumps, certainly not reaching the valleys yet with that implementation by any means. We did add a new supplementary secondary resource there at the junior high called EB Academics. It's basically to support writing and vocabulary for our junior high students. Where we're asking for approval is at science, their six-year science adoption actually ended across the district last spring. With us adopting a K5, big reading curriculum, obviously a very expensive reading curriculum, we could not pick up another large adoption in science on top of that. So we're asking for approval for a one-year adoption, not only looking at the cost of that, but the science standards actually changed in 2023, and if, if you take a look at the science standards in 2023, they also added computer science standards. So the resources that our science teachers had from six years ago no longer really connected well with the new standards. So what we did was we actually went ahead and we looked at adopting or extending that science curriculum for one more year. They're familiar with it, they've already crosswalked where they know the deficits lie, so that they felt, they felt familiar enough with it to go ahead and continue with it for one more year. We will have to figure out more of a long-term piece because we do need to have something there that does match with those standards and that does tie those computer science standards in there better. We do have the PLTW modules, which we implement kindergarten through eighth grade, so we're currently looking at those to see if those meet all of those computer science standards, and if so, then looking at how we meet those science standards on the other side of that. So this year is really going to be spent looking at that across the board in K through eight and determining how we meet those pieces moving forward. And then in social studies, with the piece here that we're looking at is really in the junior high building with Mr. Rentschler. We had not adopted anything in years in that social studies department, even within the grade levels, the two teachers within the grade levels were not on the same page in terms of using the same primary resource. So Kent worked some magic last year, and within that PLC was really able to help them understand the importance in that, and so last spring, they did some work, they started looking at some resources out there. They still, still don't feel confident in adopting, and, and honestly, Mr. Rentschler and I, Rentschler and I don't feel comfortable with them going through a full adoption yet. They really haven't put that due diligence into determining what that looks like for them, so we went with the resource, and we're asking you to approve a resource here, McGraw-Hill. It's a, as you know, it's a widely known, well-researched product that in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade really meets all of those standards for them and does a good job of bringing in a digital platform as well. With our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders using Chromebooks, it's one that they can push out to Google Classroom and they can integrate easily into the junior... the junior high day. So it's odd for us to ask for a one-year adoption, but I think that looking at our students' needs and our teachers' needs, and really kind of looking at our curriculum budget as we're building it out over the next five to six years, it makes sense for us to pause on any big adoptions right now until we determine what those next steps look like.
So was this a actual textbook, or is it on the Chromebooks?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that again?
Is this an actual physical textbook, or is it on the?
No, they're all online, yeah. Yeah, being junior high, they tend to have them mostly online. As I've been ordering curriculum at the beginning of this year, I think I've only ordered maybe 20 physical books. It's been kind of crazy. It's mostly subscriptions to online pieces. Heather Niehoff, she asked for three AP pre-calculus books, so the kids would actually have something physical to look at. But otherwise, they've all been online subscriptions, yeah.
Sure. Went ahead. Do we have a motion?
I should also note before, before you approve it, on here, you will see, or I should know, I think you guys have the, the cost on there for the social studies books. The original cost of the sixth-grade books was $4,479.30. Once these subscriptions filled and the teachers were able to get access to these, the two sixth-grade teachers realized that McGraw-Hill gave us access to the Indiana series, which makes sense, we're an Indiana school. But actually, what they wanted access to was the national series with some changes in their standards. The national series actually made more sense with the sixth-grade standards. Seventh and eighth-grade teachers were really happy with the Indiana series. So we went back and we didn't really exchange, but we received a credit for that $4,479.30. And we purchased the new series for them, for the sixth-grade students and the two teachers there. And so the cost went up from $21.33 per student to $33 per student. So it did increase that cost by $2,450.70 for that junior high, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade purchase. So I want you to, wanted to make you aware that there was an increase in that because we did end up purchasing a different version for those sixth-grade students.
Okay, so.
It just happened today. So I didn't want to push that through without you knowing that, that we had just done that today. We had just received a quote today on that.
So we've had the first. Is there a second?
No, second.
First and seconded. So Christine, would we need to know the exact amounts for these, or we're just adopting the curriculum? And, because it's not an agreement, I don't think.
The threshold that requires board approval, the part of the reason it's being brought to you is you're adopting a primary resource curriculum, which is why we felt like it was necessary to bring that to you.
Okay, so that's, okay. I just wanted to make, make sure we're, that it's all.
And the motion that was made was to adopt the curriculum, not to approve the purchase.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's fine then.
Yeah, just gotta make sure of these little details.
Just over here in a minute, right?
Well, it's below the threshold that requires board approval.
And we're just in a one-year subscription then?
Have some time to review these resources and determine what we do for a long-term period, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't like these one-year purchases, but they also make sense so that we aren't spending unnecessary money for a long-time period.
It says like five to six years. Is that too long?
You know, it's, I don't know that it's necessarily too long, but what we've been seeing in the state over the last few years is that the standards are changing so quickly that, and the textbook companies are, they promise you that they will change their online resources, but they're not keeping up with the changes. And so, yes, in some ways, the five to six-year adoptions are too long. And then what you wind up with is, if you go less than that five to six-year, they kill you on the cost. So you're stuck between a rock and a hard place. You know, you look at the cost for these one-year adoptions, and it's not what we want to pay. But you also can't, you know, lock yourself into a six-year adoption for something that two years from now may not be a great choice. I don't want to do that fiscally, you know, and be irresponsible with those funds either. So it's a hard, a hard decision to make there. But I think this is our best decision for the short, short term, especially as we're going through, and we're doing this audit, and we're trying to develop a five to six-year actual budget that we can operate off of with this curriculum fund being absorbed by the Education Fund in January. We know how important this is going to be. So I'm hoping here in the next few weeks, we'll have that developed and have a really good idea of what we're sitting on.
It was a lot clearer when we had a physical book put in front of each student.
Yeah.
And we knew we were going to have it for six years. And then six years later, we'd get a new book. And that's not the reality anymore.
Yeah, yeah. And then you throw in all the secondary resources.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I'm finding that we're getting, we're getting bills left and right from this vendor, this vendor, this vendor. And I just sent out an email early this morning, just wanting to know how many people were using a resource that we're spending $9,000 a year on. Because if we only have a handful of people using it on a regular basis, and we've been paying it yearly, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to continue to pay it. We can use that money to help our teachers in other ways. So we're just cleaning it up. We're, we're asking questions and trying to figure out what, what we're doing. So it's been, it's been really positive so far. Yeah. Okay.
You think, Brewer? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Now, consideration to approve the JAG agreement. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, this was a annual renewal agreement with the South Central Region Workforce Board that provides Edgewood High School with a JAG specialist. And our JAG specialist is Jill Ferguson, and she does an amazing job. She's really, she really connects with the students. And so I would recommend approval of this agreement.
You've been seconded. Any discussion?
It's such a great program, and I, I'm Facebook friends with one of the first students that completed the JAG program. And I, it's just, it's been an amazing thing for him. It's changed his life, so.
Yeah, have you seen the students at the JAG conference?
Oh.
They, they just grow in confidence. I've enjoyed talking to them and hearing what they have to say. And probably without this program, they would not have gained that confidence to be able to make presentations and impress us so much, so.
Well, to see somebody stand up and make a presentation like that, that in, earlier in my career, I would have predicted would not have graduated.
Right, right.
Is, it's, it's priceless.
That's awesome. Awesome. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Now, we're going to move on to approve the Healthy Meals Initiative Grant Strategic Plan.
Before we get to that, I have a little background to this introduction.
Correct.
Because it fits in so well. Our theme here in our school corporation this year is e-synced equals e-success. And I've been, in all of our back-to-school meetings, I've talked about the movie Boys in, Boys in the Boat, and how it's so important, I just watched a movie this past weekend, I love it so much, how when you're rowing in a boat, that you have to be in sync. You could be even working too hard, but hurting your team because you're not in sync with everybody else. And when I looked over this plan, I just really got excited about it, because when you have a plan like this, then everybody, not just people in nutrition services, but everybody in the whole school corporation knows what we're trying to do and what we're after. And so Vicki Coffey, she sent out an email at the beginning of the school year that was just, is just full of great information. And she wrote a grant, a Healthy Meals Incentive Grant, that enabled us to partner with Tara Westercamp. And she's here tonight to present the strategic plan.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tara. Nice to meet you all. I won't go through everything on the slides, just so you know. You do have a packet in your handout, little thing about all of the, all of what I'm going to say. But kind of like to tee this up, like Dr. Sanders was talking about. The one thing about this that Vicki got, this is a very elite grant. So not every school district in the country got it. Specifically, 264 school districts got it, out of a little over 13,000 school districts in the country. So you guys should be very proud of what she's doing. And yeah, I would say give her a round of applause. It's really prestigious, and she's really doing a great job. I'm just here, you know, the workhorse, getting it done. But we're, we're working together on this. And the grant is titled Harvesting Healthy Hoosiers. So talking about that great analogy, this is what we're working toward, not just helping them for right now, but leaning into those healthy habits that will help a lifetime. So mission and vision, mission and the vision is up on the screen in your handout. I'm not going to read it word for word, but just kind of talking through kind of what we want to do. The overall arching thing is to really impact our community right where we're at, to hear the kiddos and their families of how we can impact them through nutrition education, taste testings, chefs coming in, farmers coming in, really get them excited. And I, I want you to know, I'm a dietitian, so I kind of love this thing. But I also love the aspect that we can get the students involved in this, let them know that this is a career job you could actually have, whether it's being a dietitian, a food service director, farmer, all of these different things. They're gonna, chef, they're going to learn a lot with this experience. So moving on, just to kind of overall, the goals from the grant. What we've worked on so far is reduce the amount of added sugars and reduce the amount of sodium into the two main programs that you guys offer, which is school breakfast and lunch. By the way, this is a new rule that USDA just approved this past spring. So we're kind of ahead of the curve. Once again, Vicki is standing out in a big room here. Engaging students on local menu planning, taste testing, featuring local agricultural products. I will mention this again, but I helped create a website. And so your students, your families, your teachers, and obviously school nutrition staff can become aware of where their food's coming from. And so previously, we've used one farm from the area to help provide local produce. And this year, we're going to have about five. So we're gonna, the goal is to kind of increase that and create that sustainability. And then working on a scratch prepared menu, I helped Vicki and her team get some hands-on culinary training, so we can work towards that. It's a long mission, right? It's a long step. It's not just overnight. So what we're working toward it, and Vicki's team's already had some really great success with these scratch-made recipes. And so lastly, I know we just heard from Jennifer, but we'll be working together to kind of implement this curriculum that's part of the grant. So nutrition education, farm-to-school, as well as like healthy eating practices. So that'll be for K through 12. So what we have been able to overcome through this so far is helping with like the limited staff and helping them to see techniques that while they may be short-staffed, they can also utilize what they have, whether it be equipment and products, to get the same outcome. We also talked about food costs. That's why we're doing the local purchasing, physical space, and then meeting nutrient standard requirements. And then last, but definitely not least, putting the focus on the kiddos and what they want in their meals. So this past year, this is, we're starting year two of two. And so last year was a lot of planning, but we did a lot of stuff. You can see it on the screen. I'm not going to read it, because it's a lot. The big one I want to point out, though, is that stamp up there. It is a Trailblazer Award that Vicki and her team got for already working and accomplishing reducing added sugars on their breakfast menu. Their been, menu has been revamped, and I think elevated is the right word. It has tons of scratch cooking, less added sugars, less sodium, and we work together, and it's really great. One student, high school student, they had a taste test this past week. And one high school student told our staff that they are really loving these healthier options. And so this is really making an impact on our kiddos and how they choose items in, in their daily life. So there's a ton up there, not going to take your time. But just so you know, upcoming, we have three chefs that we're utilizing throughout the school year. You can see the dates on the screen. The next big one is September 5th. That's when you all have your wellness fair. So I'll be there, and a chef will be there. We'll be doing a demo of two different recipes, a from-scratch chicken wing, chicken thigh, sorry, we did this last time, chicken thigh. And so it'll have a nice sauce with that. And we'll be doing beef bulgogi. So we're introducing them to some different, you know, culturally relevant foods. And with that, the kids get to vote on their favorite, as long with the families' the favorite menu. One fun thing about the beef is coming from Fisher Farms. So if you know about that farm, it's not too far away. So it's coming straight from an Indiana Hoosier Farm, which is what we want to do. School curriculum will be starting to get going here in the fall. We'll be doing a task force, highlighting events and stories. If you haven't seen our Facebook page, we're doing it through there. Incorporating recipes more into the school menu. And then, like in September 5th, we'll continue doing those voting opportunities for kids to identify the items that they want. And we've worked on writing some grants to further this. I think that was the question earlier and something else. So we'll continue to do that as well. And I plan to apply for every Healthy Meal Incentive Award that there is for you all. So hopefully you all will have all of them. That's the goal, collect them all, right? So this is just kind of the next steps, just making this sustainable. How can we make this every, happen every year without the grant? So we'll work on doing those things necessary. That's part of what this year is about. And have an evaluation phase during spring 2025. So I will say, again, like I mentioned, we do have websites so that our families and students can get access to all these materials. And why it's important is because there's nutrition education materials on there. They're also from local farming, so they can understand that aspect. And it's in various languages. And we also have videos that teachers could use right now, like for sports, nutrition, and all of those things. So there's a lot of interesting things going on that we can kind of envelop our families into this program. So, yeah, that's all I have.
Right. And let me stick about the whole child, which we've been talking about in our school corporation for several years. I mean, the curriculum is obviously important. Hiring good teachers is obviously important to providing a quality education for our students, but also providing our students with mental health support and quality food, and making sure that we're providing our, our students and staff with healthy options. It all goes together. And, and in the end, Edgewood students benefit from all of us working together. I really appreciate Tara and Vicki for all the work that they do to, to make sure that as far as nutrition services, that that is a quality effort to help our students and help the whole child.
Every time I think of Vicki Coffey, I think, how long you been with us now?
Twenty.
Well, about the first, when I came, when I came on the board, we hired her. She had a debt of $225,000 in the food service. And look what we've moved to now. So fantastic. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Do we have a motion to approve the Healthy Meals Initiative Grant Strategic Plan?
I so move.
You've been seconded. And what does the curriculum look like?
The curriculum will be for the Google Classroom. It's in, I have a curriculum director that's doing it. So we're in the midst of finalizing it, but we'll have handouts and easy-to-use like platforms, like a video or something. So.
So is it, like, all grades would have something that they're doing?
Yeah, so we're breaking it out into like elementary, middle, and high school. And then they'll kind of build on one another, but like the high school is going to be more, kind of do it your own pace. kind of do it your own pace, if you will. But she's matching it with the curriculums, and I took note of the computer science thing to see if I can do something with that. So. But if that helps to answer your question there. Yep.
I saw the, one of the days, the three chefs is coming is September 5th.
Yes, sir.
And that's also our showcase, right? Is there a connection there? Will they?
Oh, I'm sorry. I must have used the wrong word. Yes. She will be there. She'll be here all day. So she's prepping the meal.
Into the evening?
Yes.
Terrific.
Yes.
I just, yeah.
During the showcase, one of the activities that families can participate in is the Health Fair, which is held in the multipurpose room of Edgewood Junior High School. So last year, it was hard to get around. There were so many people in there, so.
It was fun.
Awesome. Okay, it's been moot and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Okay. Now, consideration to approve the Head Start contract. Dr. Sanders?
More good news, also because of the hard work of Vicki, that we've been able to establish a partnership with Head Start, that our Nutrition Services Department will provide Head Start students with healthy school meals, approximately 200 meals. And that will provide a funding source for us, which will be an amount of $192,000, $192,257.48. And so I appreciate, once again, Vicki's hard work. She's here to answer any questions, or if you have some more information you want to add, feel free to step up to the podium. But this is, they already work really hard. So this is, it'll be a little, a little more work, but it's really going to provide us with a lot more benefits, too.
I just want to, to mention that the Head Start contract, we did have it before. When we were at Steinsville, we had the Head Start contract then. And then when we moved to the, to the Edge Building, now the Technology Building, we also provided meals for them when they were at their facility, SCAP, down the road on 46. So we just rekindled that partnership, if you will, after, I think, 10 years. Not positive on the timing, but after that. But bringing in that $192,000 for the year was just imperative to get, not only to feed more kids, obviously, our healthy meals, and to get those students familiar with school lunches, but also to help sustain the CEP, RBB Goes Free for K through 5. We lost about $150,000 a year there, just in sales and revenue. But to, we had to find something to absorb that loss, and we did. And even better with another $42,000. So that's why it's so very important. So we hope to keep that partnership and relationship with them for many years to come.
Motion? Moot and seconded. Any discussion?
Small complaint. I don't like, when I'm reading the board minutes, that you, you get my appetite going. And I'm. But anyway.
Anything further?
Food truck. Go on. It's going well. Had a good summer with it?
We had over, we did 20 pounds of meals that summer.
That's awesome.
And that's the only thing that was so small, so it's great. That's probably one of the best things I ever did. Really, I mean, I, because it eliminates the stigma. We've had all kinds of people coming out to the food truck, especially in the library and other places. And it just, it builds community. It eliminates the stigma, which is great.
And I see the food truck.
All the time. Yeah, we went to, they had a fundraiser, the CrossFit had a fundraiser. So I showed up there, and, and there was our food truck. And I just had to get something to eat there, obviously.
That was for Christian Church this summer, then? I did not know that. That's awesome. Good deal. Yeah. All right. Thank you for all you're doing.
Anything further? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Now, consideration to approve the contract of the deaf and hard-of-hearing teacher.
Yes, so asking the board to renew Amy Green's contract. She serves as our deaf and hard, deaf and hard-of-hearing teacher. And through the contract, Ms. Green provides evaluations, developing IEPs and services for our students in that population. I believe it's $100 per hour, isn't it? And Jennifer Anderson is here tonight, if you have any additional questions. But I recommend your approval of this renewal of Amy Green's contract.
Oh, second.
All right, it's moot and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Now, on to the agreement for the JetEd Consulting.
Yes, so periodically, we need to meet the needs of students who need to be placed into a residential placement. And JetEd provides us with consulting services that enables us to make the most appropriate placement. They're very knowledgeable in different facilities. And so Jennifer Anderson works with them whenever the situation arises. The cost is $8,800 per student, but that's throughout the duration of the student's placement. And Jennifer, like I said, is here tonight, if you have any questions. But I recommend approval of this agreement with JetEd.
Approval of the agreement with JetEd Consulting?
I'll second.
Moot and seconded. I see that they also have a step-down secondary program that's discounted to $4,400 for that particular.
If necessary, right.
Yeah, if necessary. Okay. Any discussion?
For Medicaid. Okay. And Part B.
We can use either funds to pay for, to pay for this, Medicaid or Part B. It will most likely come from Medicaid.
Okay.
But it is not part of the SEEK funding. It's not reimbursable through SEEK. This part of it is not reimbursable. This is out of our pocket through our Medicaid funding.
Okay. And this is a different situation than what we did last spring with the, the out-of-state placement. Okay.
Roughly, how many students does this affect a year?
This is two in the last 20 years. So very, very, very rare that happens.
But when it does.
When it does, it's.
It's important, and it's, yeah, it makes the whole process go so much smoother.
Yeah, we definitely want to have it in place. I just was curious, and so.
Situation we are, or public, public voucher schools would be in the same position if they were asked to service. Okay. Gotcha.
Okay. Anything further? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Now, we move on to the last action item. It's a memorandum of understanding with DePaul University. Dr. Sanders?
So we get the vast majority of our student teachers from Indiana University. But from time to time, we will get a request from somebody who is attending another university, like DePaul or like Indiana Wesleyan. And if we can utilize that student teacher, then, then we take advantage of that opportunity. Most of the time, it's somebody who already has a relationship with our school corporation or our community. In this case, we have a student who has worked with our marching band before, that would like to do their student teaching. And since they're familiar with Edgewood, they're familiar with the band, they want to do their student teaching here. So this is just an agreement with DePaul University that makes that possible.
Move approval of the MOU with DePaul?
Moot and seconded. Any discussion?
Do we have relationships, excuse me, relationships like this with any other private schools in the state?
We've had with Indiana Wesleyan before. Principals, do you know any other private institution we've worked with?
WGU.
Uh, WGU.
That's kind of a public.
Yeah.
Yeah. State university sort of. Yeah, I was just curious, because I was, I couldn't remember anybody other than IU and ISU, but. Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah. That's right. Okay. I was just curious. Nick, I talked to the student teacher coordinator at DePaul on the way down. They're disbanding the program. The juniors and the seniors are going to, will be allowed to student teach, and then they're no longer going to do it after that. So, and she said, this, this young man's top, top shelf. He'll do a good job with Mr. Wells.
Anything further? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We'll move into the superintendent's report. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so you have that in front of you. And I will invite Jennifer Barrett or Dirk Ackerman to step up if they would like to say a few words. But these are some test results from last school year. We had, gave the IREED III to second and third graders. And 95% of our third graders passed. And 54% of our second graders passed the third grade test. So I think that's pretty good. And 95% is excellent. And then we will continue to serve those students. That 5% that didn't pass will continue to, to serve them and, and work with them as they move on to, to fourth grade. ILEARN results, I always like to, I've always liked to compare how my school corporation does with the state. And for, looking at these tables here, green means that we're, we've met that goal of, of meeting or exceeding the state average. Yellow means we're approaching that, that state average. And so you could see with English Language Arts in, at every grade, and, well, grades three through eight, incorporation wide, we exceed the state average. In math, we exceed it third, fourth, sixth, and then incorporation wide. And we have some work to do at fifth grade, seventh, and eighth. But we just adopted a new math curriculum. And, and some other efforts, I think, where you'll see these scores continue to go up because of our work with HRS, High Reliability Schools, with professional learning communities, as we get these test results. And in our PLCs, then the teachers can drill down to individual students. Back in the day, when iStep first started, you know, sadly, the schools just did not drill down into that data. It was, you know, you looked at your results, and, and that's about as, as, as deep as you went. But now, we really drill down to, to that data, and we, we look for curriculum. We look for strategies to improve those numbers. The other thing I like to do is just how, how did we do from the year before? Now, that's not an exact comparison, because you're not really comparing students to students. But I like to see how we do every year at the grade levels and, and whether we're improving from the year before. And once again, you could see that we're exceeding that goal in most cases. And anything in red are areas that we're, could tell you that we're focusing on right now. I put a couple yellows in there, as in we're approaching that goal. But frankly, we want to see our math scores much higher than they are at fifth, seventh, and eighth grades. And like I said, that was a primary focus on adopting a new math curriculum. And then the last table below is our 2024 AP results. And you could see for each of these tests, the number in parentheses are how many students took that test. And so you could take a look at that and see where we really did well. Chemistry, 100%, and, and it's a scale one to five. So these are the percentages of students who received a three or better. Okay?
In most cases, that means that we get culture.
Right. And in comparison to the state. And you could see we're doing better in most areas when we compare ourselves to the state. So I'm going to let Dirk and Jennifer jump in where I did not.
Dr. Sanders, I think you covered it there. Just to throw out some celebrations to some of our teams. That third grade team for math, 64%, that is absolutely tremendous. They were 12% above the state average there. Also, the fourth grade team, 10% above the state, state average. I also want to point out growth in that sixth grade math team. They went from 32% in 2023, grew 15% last year. That's just tremendous growth right there. I could not send out enough kudos to Chad Musclewhite and Tom Norris. They put a lot of work into their PLC last year, and it showed. And I, I look forward to seeing that grow again this year with Chad and his new teaching partner. Also, I know that, you know, we have the eighth grade math team there highlighted in yellow. But take a look at that growth. They went from 22% to 28%. And even though they have work to do, that's still some great growth that we're seeing there. So I think it just goes to show that we are moving in the right direction on that side. And even though our ELA numbers are lower than we would like for them to be, I don't think we ever want to see ELA below 50%. We know what that means for our kids in the future. We are still above the state average. I still don't love to say that being below 50% is above the state average. I think we're better than that. And I truly think that as we move forward and as we're putting additional procedures in place for monitoring students, as EPS is continuing to grow their procedures with Science of Reading, they're growing their instructional methods day in and day out. We're putting a new reading assessment in place to progress monitor students, starting all the way back in kindergarten. I truly believe that we're going to see these numbers climb, and we're going to start to lead the state in what we look like in math and ELA. These pieces are coming together, and it's exciting for us to see these changes. And I really believe we're at the forefront of starting to see the shift really start to, to move in the right way.
First, I'm going to say it's just so important that I think the ILEARN results are on top of the AP because it's so important. The foundation is so important to how we end up with the AP results. Secondly, I didn't realize that the printer did not print off all the sheets. So I had sent the scores over to Dr. Sanders, and there's actually four more scores. We actually. We actually have 11 AP classes. I will talk, speak specifically to two of them. Government and psychology were about 15 points above the state average. So those were very good as well. The econ and environmental science, we're not offering environmental science this year. The biology is now going to be an ACP class. In other words, students will get instant, the immediate college credit for that. So we have 12 opportunities for AP classes for our students and 13 ACP or dual credit classes. So I think we're really doing great things to benefit the students. And of course, last year, we talked about, we became, signed the MOU with IU for the ICC, the Indiana College Core. And we've added another class this year, college speech. And again, the biology will now be ACP. So really, I was really proud of the AP scores. We know we're not going to hit the target on all of them, but boy, if you look at this where we did hit the target, it wasn't just in the green. It was really, some of these scores are outstanding. Chemistry, eight out of eight got a passing score. That's really incredible. So our teachers are working really hard to try to make sure, it's really important for us to try to make sure as many students as possible get that three, four, or five because that credit does go to the college for sure. So, all right.
Calculus, do we still have ACP calculus also?
Yes, so I should probably explain, there were two of them there I did want to talk about.
Trying to figure out the numbers here a little bit because that's a lot of kids in language composition too.
So we have a lot more kids in calculus, but not all of them because they're taking the dual credit. These kids are choosing to take it, they could be possibly going out of state because the IU credit may not transfer, but.
They're also, so that 25 includes the ACP kids too?
It include, no, there are even more kids. So there's some kids that don't take the AP. So there's a little less buy-in to that because they know they've already got the dual credit grade. So I think that that really impacts those scores. And then the art history, I was really excited about that. It's, right now, it's in the red, but this was her first year to teach it. And she just found out at the beginning of the year, she was going to be teaching the art history course. I think really those scores are really good for a first-year AP teacher.
And then the English Language Comp, 60 kids took the AP test? That's awesome.
Yeah.
And then there's even more that are doing ACP.
Well, yeah. A lot of them are doing the language.
The dual as juniors and then they'll do the dual credit as seniors and that's, so yeah, we've got some.
I was really impressed by those numbers.
Yeah, I know, I thought you would be, Larry. And secondly, we actually have two sections. So our senior English, we have Advanced Comp and L202, which are college ACP courses through IU.
Correct.
And then as a second layer, we have AP English Lit. And then the third layer is that students can choose just to take Comp Lit, not for any college credit at all. We have two sections of AP Lit next year. So we have our regular three sections of W131 and L202 and two additional sections of AP Lit. That's spectacular. Yeah, just we're really, really good.
It'd be kind of cool to see the numbers for academic honors credits.
I'm sorry?
It'd be cool to see the academic honors credits earned too. Because those are the ones that are done directly through IU, correct?
For academic honors? No, they can get.
No, I mean, ACP, excuse me.
ACP, yeah. Yeah, those are from IU.
That'd be cool to see that chart too. Because that's a lot of kids.
Yeah, it's a lot of kids. It's a lot of college credits.
Right, right, okay. Good.
Going from being seniors to graduating and then they are sophomores in college before they ever step on campus.
By enough credits, but they couldn't be sophomores. Now with the new ICC, they will be sophomores when they register.
Right.
So even though they had 35 or 40 credits, they still went in as freshmen. From now on with the ICC, and that's why we added speech, because that was a requirement of the ICC. And so from now on, they will go in as a sophomore. Yeah.
That's, yeah, that's pretty impressive.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Our freshman year done by the time she went, that was, what, five years ago? I can't remember how long ago, but it's been quite a while back. And so been working hard on this for many years.
Our boost came when we got into the APTIP program several years ago. And from that point on, we've just continued to grow.
Then the foreign languages are all doing ACP, right?
All the foreign language are through ACP through IU. But, say again?
None of them are doing AP, they're all doing ACP.
They're all ACP, yes.
Gotcha.
Yeah. So we have two levels at each foreign language, yeah.
I'd like to take a few more questions. Got a couple of questions over these. Okay, I'm sorry. So the REED three, is there a state number for that to compare against or?
I think we're supposed to.
Reach 95%, aren't we?
Yeah, there are some state percentages right now. So we should have that at the next meeting. I think he is in contact with the state right now. There are some errors on that and so we want to shore that up before we confirm all of those pieces. I was in contact with Katie in the last few days and something doesn't seem quite right with the report that we received and the data that we've given. So something isn't matching up.
That's why I didn't give you that state average because.
For the folks on CATS that didn't pick up, the, there's some issues with the state number, so that's why we're not comparing anything when it comes to IREED three.
The state wants you.
School corporations to, schools to do, to reach 95%.
Which we did.
Which we did.
Awesome. So we meet the state goal. I know it's really hard to go from grade one year to grade the next year. But it just looks like the, for math, going from fourth grade to fifth grade, they went from being 57 cents percent down to 37%. That's, that's a third drop. And then they dropped some in English Language, not as much, but it's just, you know.
Is there any area that we're having to?
Seems like there's a little hole there that needs to be filled.
Am I understanding, this year, those 5% of students who didn't pass the IREED did not have to repeat, but this coming school year, the current school year, if they don't pass the IREED, then they are supposed to be retained unless there's extenuating circumstances?
There's some measures in place.
Would you mind?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I put you on the spot here.
No. If you have a lot to say, I have a question for you.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is the last thing.
Yes, our understanding with the state is unless something would change between now and then, that the recommendation by the state is that moving forward, their graders who do not pass IREED three are to be retained unless they meet certain criteria, like they've already been retained before. They have a good cause exemption, possibly through special education. And there are some other factors that would go into that. We'll see how that goes. It's a tough piece. It also has to do with their age. It's not necessarily the best decision for all kids. It's hard to put a blanket on top of a problem and say this is the answer to every problem. So we're going to navigate that the best we can.
From our state legislators.
Yeah.
The Department of Education, I think, is thankfully giving school corporations much more flexibility and giving us a chance to address the needs of individual students in a way that we think are most appropriate. So hopefully, that will change as far as the state legislators go down the road. Because it just boxes us, students, put them, put them all in the same box and we know every child's different.
Yeah.
Well, and situations too. I mean, somebody, some kid could have been ill or coming back to school after being out for a couple of weeks, being ill and.
There's so many.
All kinds of things.
Yeah, so many components with all of this.
Is it a COVID thing too?
It can be. You know, we look at some of those grade levels that were impacted back in kindergarten and first grade and we, with some of those kids, I think we still see some lingering effects. Some research still shows some lingering effects. I think that we're closing those gaps pretty significantly. You know, really what we see is it's more SEL related than it is anything. And we can't necessarily change, you know, outside our walls, but we try our darndest. So those are things that unfortunately, I don't want to see kids punished for and we can't change that. But we certainly can do the best that we can while they're in our care and provide additional supports to them then. I think the last thing we want to see is, you know, 16-year-olds in eighth grade, you know, we know the impact that that has and that is long-lasting. So Jen and I work really hard, you know, when it comes to thinking about those pieces from the academic side and the social emotional side. And we think about it with every single individual student. There's not a blanket answer to any of this. So we work hard with those teams to make sure we make the best decision we can for each of those individual students.
Just thinking of simple test, right? So, I mean, there's so much.
Yeah.
IEPs, how does that play in? Some do take it, some don't take it? Because it's individualized or does everyone take it?
Do you care if I answer that, Jen? Okay. Yeah, every third grade student will take it unless that student is significantly cognitively impaired, meaning they're on an alternate education. Otherwise, every single student will take IREED three if they are determined within their case conference committee that that student's disability is a good cause for them not passing IREED three. So an example would be a student with a learning disability in reading. That's a good cause for why they are not reading at a third grade level. Then they, the case conference can decide to give them the good cause exemption. Where the state comes into this and makes it difficult for schools is that that state, that student, even though they are given the good cause exemption, they still count as a did not pass for that school district. And that's, that's hard to see because it's not that the school did anything wrong. It's certainly not that the student did anything wrong or the family did anything wrong. But it's certainly reflected that way when percentages come back. And when the state says that they want us to reach 95% of our students passing IREED three, we do too. You know, obviously, we do too. But we also have students that have disabilities and, you know, we're not making excuses for those kids. They have disabilities and we acknowledge that. And we work within what their needs require and they simply aren't reading at a third grade level. And that's just reality. And we might not ever reach that 95% because that's reality. And so that's really, I think that's hard for schools to swallow. So, we take all kids and we love all kids, whether they have an IEP or they don't.
Right. Yep. So appreciate all the hard work you guys do for those students too.
Yeah.
All, like you said, all the students are important.
Our entire staff.
So I want to say, I think it's significant that you understand because this is a real change. You notice she said with a significant cognitive disability, it used to be that students with a mild cognitive disability, they took a separate test as well. So right now, we've got kids that have a mild disability that are taking the SAT. And it's, I just, it's, we've got kids that really can't hardly read the SAT or sitting down and taking the SAT. So it's, they, yeah, I really disagree with the state on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of the standardized tests don't really even show what the kid actually knows, the student actually knows.
No.
They may know plenty to be able to succeed, they just didn't show up on that test.
Yeah.
Any further questions on that?
Your brain starts wandering, Ms. Barrett. The, from that fourth, like Mr. Kerr said, on the fourth and fifth grade, to drop 20%, would it have had anything to do with new curriculum?
Yeah, I think sometimes.
I mean, I'm trying to figure out how that, how that could have happened.
I wish we could say it's all that.
I thought we had a bunch of move-ins.
We've seen this drop for many years, from fourth to fifth. This is not anything new. I wish I could say this is a sudden piece. You know, it blew our minds. It's not. Mr. Scholl and I have been watching this over the last few years. We've tried some different pieces. We haven't put our finger on it yet, exactly what it is. It doesn't seem to be the instruction. It doesn't seem to be the curriculum. We're still working on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's something there.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's something there.
Well, thanks for delving into it.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Sanders?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Rick Rowton for all he does every meeting to make this all go smooth. You know, he's a busy guy during the day and then for him to be here at night, making sure our board meetings run well, I just want to thank him and thank CATS for being here. Just a commercial for our Edgewood Showcase on September 5th. We've got a lot of great plans for the evening and I'd like to invite the board to come out and enjoy it and walk around and enjoy some good food and see some great things. We have another High Reliability Schools Conference coming up in September. We're taking 36 or 37 people to that conference. So even though it's in Alabama, I think we're going to have more than any other school corporation there. And we'll have administrators and teachers. So we've expanded those going to the conference to teachers. We have two school board members going, Brad and you Dana will be going this time. Jimmy and Larry have already gone and we're going to work on Angie for down the road. And so looking forward to that. And so because of that HRS conference in September, it'll be September 15th through the 18th, we are moving the September school board meeting to September 25th. So we've already advertised for that new date.
Anything further?
I don't know if it's okay, Jimmy, but I want to wish Jimmy Durnall good luck getting the next.
11:30 Saturday, first day of church, so, yeah.
I was a little disappointed because I asked him, I told him I wanted to go to see the Indianapolis Indians play Saturday and he told me he couldn't go.
Yep, gotta keep you in mind.
I'd box that out, I'm not sure. Thank you, Dr. Sanders, appreciate it.
Okay, RBBA comments, there will be none this evening. So four member comments, we'll start with Mr. Durn.
Thank you, appreciate it. Well, fall brings football and I've been watching Steve and Fisher and the boys up here a couple of times and it looks like they're coming along good. The North Putnam scrimmage was pretty well, went pretty well. So wishing those guys, I'm sorry, Scott Fisher, I got that wrong. Again, I've been, this is my, starting my 25th year on the school board, this is the first meeting 24 years ago I was on the board. We had a lady that leave the area, to leave the area. But, you know, I've noticed over the years, the better supervision we have, the better principals we have, we're a better system. And I look out there now at all the good people we've got and it's just fantastic and I sure appreciate you all very much. So, thank you.
Mr. Demas?
I just, I'll echo what Jimmy said and congratulate him on his upcoming wedding. But appreciate the administrators. And I very much enjoyed the first, coming out on the first day and seeing the enthusiasm and getting to talk to the teachers and get a chance to, everybody's going to be rowing in the same direction. I love the metaphor. Also, I appreciate Senator Yoder had a couple of sessions. I participated along with Julie Byer from the high school in talking about the new graduation requirements. And I appreciate the fact that the, they did listen and they adopted, reacted to some of those concerns. It's definitely improved. I haven't had a chance to tear it apart yet, but it's definitely better than it was. I think it's, it's much more doable than, than what they first came out with, so. I think it's, it's much more doable than, than what they first came out with, so. But I'm just looking forward to the kickoff and, or the showcase, and looking forward to a great year.
Awesome. Ms. Jacob?
Well, I think we started off really well, beginning, you know, the school year. I have one, one kid left, and he is so excited about this year, so he's having a wonderful year. And we always appreciate donations, you know, anytime that we get donations that come in for our students, that just, you know, makes us feel really good. So we appreciate any that we get in. I'm excited to see all the new things and new, you know, construction that's going around our corporation. We're just continuing to grow and build, and, you know, I agree that we have, our administration is top-notch. You can't ask for a better administration. And I'm glad I'm a part of it. Thank you.
Mr. Tucker?
Ditto to what everybody said tonight, and I did, actually, I got some teachers in the back that were talking about your paddles, your oars, and you pulled that big one out of your pocket, the monster, and I think it must have been new to you, she said, "We gotta take care of those around our room." I said, "Then you came back with the smaller one." So thank you for doing it. That was, that was a good meeting, though, for the first day, and looking forward to it, exciting year for everybody. Thanks for coming tonight.
Yeah, so I emailed my team and said, "Hey, where can I get a full-sized oar?" And Mr. Irwin's so helpful, said they have them at Walmart. But no, he came through and brought me one from, from his house, and so, yeah, that was, we had a really good start of the school year. And this is something, I'll just go back to this, you got me talking again, Brad. This is something that we need to, and I've talked to my administrators, we need to emphasize this all year long. I just was looking at a newsletter Jennifer Anderson sent out to her team, and she was, she was emphasizing that. So that's what, in our own roles, we need to emphasize this. And I think our school corporation is going to benefit so much, even greater when we work together, we communicate well, and, and you're gonna see some really cool things down the road, if you haven't already seen some cool things. Sorry, I got going again.
Yeah, no problem. Thanks, Brad. I, it's so hard to go last, because so much been said, and it's been a very long meeting, so I will thank all of you that stayed this long. Thank you for that. I, when this was handed out, I missed that meeting, and so I said, "What is that, a tongue depressor? Or, or one of those things you stick in a plant that describes, you know, about the plant?" So, and I thought, you know what, that's a pretty good analogy, too, because, you know, this is, what you see on those things is what identifies success and how you take care of it and how you help it grow. And so that kind of works, too, a little bit, so. But Dr. Sanders, in the meeting earlier today about going to Birmingham, talked about how difficult it is when you get in so much information at one time. And this is one of those meetings where I'm really gonna have to decompress after this, because there was a lot of really amazing, wonderful information that has come through. And it's, you guys are just, like they all said, you're amazing. So thank you very much, and this meeting's adjourned.